... is called to order, please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the best will with the liberty of justice for all.
Thank you. Kate, could we have a roll call? Gary Cunningham?
Here.
Doug Bryson is absent. Marie McFarland?
Here.
Sean Keir is absent and excused. Steve Griffiths?
Here.
Miles Lessinger?
Here.
And Patty Crowan?
Here.
Any changes to the agenda or revisions?
No, Chair.
Okay. We have the minutes from the February 19th regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Any comments on that?
I move we accept the minutes for February 19, 2019.
I second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. Under final orders, we have a final order 2019-01 for the Ocean Lake Veterinary Clinic Animal Boarding Kennels. Director Zamo, I noticed that you formalized the conditions that the applicant included in the application.
Correct, yes. The conditions are directly from the applicant's recommendations and application for the conditional use. Being that the conditional use permit was brought ahead of the site plan, that's why they're a little small at this stage, but we'll get through the site plan review and wrap it all together.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve final order 2019-01 for the Ocean Lake Veterinary Clinic Animal Boarding Kennels.
I second.
All right. Could we have a voice vote, Kate? Okay, roll call, please. Okay. McFarland?
Yes.
Griffiths?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Lessinger?
Yes.
And Crowan?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. We have a public hearing. It is now 6:03 PM. The public hearing for file ZOA 2019-01 is now open. This public hearing concerns a city-initiated proposal to amend Title 17 zoning in Chapter 17.42 Park Zone to amend Section 17.42.020 permitted uses. The ordinance will clarify the regulation of commercial activity, vending and other activities in park-zoned land, and the ordinance also adds temporary emergency operations uses in the park zone. The Planning Commission's role in the legislative process is to consider any written or oral comments or testimony as well as information from staff and present a recommendation to the City Council, who will hold an additional public hearing. The City Council may adopt the Planning Commission recommendation or may take other action. The Commission must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the Commission wish to declare a conflict of interest in this matter? Okay, seeing none. The substantive criteria that applies to this hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city's comprehensive plan, and the applicable provisions of the city's zoning ordinance. So any comments and testimony should be directed to those criteria or to other criteria you believe apply to the subject of this hearing. Before the staff presents a report, I'll summarize the adopted public hearing procedures. The staff will present a report and respond to any questions. After that, any person may speak up two, three minutes. If your testimony includes questions, please direct them to me as the Chair. We won't interrupt your testimony to answer questions. We may direct your questions to staff following your testimony. If the Planning Commission has questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up sheet at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name only. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Will the staff please present their report? Who's doing it?
I'll be doing it.
All right.
So the Parks Director and the staff in the Visitors and Convention Bureau now explore Lincoln City, and legal staff and planning staff basically got together and talked about how to clarify commercial activity in city parks. There were several ordinances in the city that kind of conflict and we're trying to sort them out. So there are four ordinances in process. This is the only land use ordinance, and it concerns the permitted uses in the park zone. So we have 1742.020, and it speaks to commercial activity in that it says you can have concession stands in a park, approved by the Parks Director, in conjunction with recreational activities. It talks about special events, approved by the city manager, and it talks about vendors holding permits under Chapter 528. Well, all those things are correct, but not exactly. For example, in order to engage in commercial activity in a city park through a concession agreement, you have to go through a process with the Parks Director to get an exclusive use permit and sign a concession agreement. So this is the kind of thing you would think of, you know, the concession stand at the baseball game or something like that. So the language was just a little bit outdated, so it's now revised to read "commercial activity" when authorized with an exclusive use permit in Parks concession agreement, because that's what we do in parks. Now, that ordinance change in the Parks Regulations, which is in Chapter 12, was made about four years ago, and we've been following it, but this language had never been updated. So the second issue was special events, and what it said now was, what it says now is "special events is approved by the city manager." Well, special events are not actually approved by the city manager unless the director, the VCB or Explore Lincoln City, gives it to the city manager to do. He can sometimes step out of it and pass along. So this needed to be updated and corrected as well. Now it reads "by permit" under LCMC 516, which is the special event ordinance, authorizing commercial activity with a Parks concession agreement. So again, if you're going to be using a city park for commercial activity, you have to pay the city through a concession agreement the concession amount, which is 10% of the income that you make, because it's public property. It shouldn't be available for you to use for free. And this has been a part of special events, but never expressly stated. So this is another way you can engage in commercial activity in a city park. You have to have a concession agreement, you have to have a special event permit which is processed through Explore Lincoln City. And then the last provision, which has actually struck through, says vendors holding permits as approved by the Planning and Community Development Director in accordance with Chapter 528, which is the street vendors ordinance. Now, the street vendors ordinance would authorize people to, on public right-of-way in specified zones, or in, on private property in specified zones, to engage in vending from essentially a four-by-eight cart. Well, one of the things that ordinance did was say, "If you get a permit from the Planning Department, you can vend in the following parks," and it listed, said you can vend in any park except for these parks. Well, but it didn't say you had to have a concession agreement, and it was inconsistent with the other ordinances, both the special event and the Parks Regulations. So this language is struck through. If you get a street vending permit, you can do street vending in approved locations. That is, we've looked at where you're proposing to put your cart in the right-of-way, and we've said this is an ADA-accessible location, it's not going to conflict with vehicular or pedestrian traffic. If you're going to put it on a private property, you're going to have to go through some kind of site plan approval, or there's going to have to be some recognition on the site plan through the land use process that this is an area reserved for vendors. So you can imagine someone going through the site plan process and saying, "Well, in the summertime, I'd like to have these spaces as possible cart vending areas, and look, this doesn't interfere with vehicular traffic, it's, you know, in parking spaces that aren't required," or something like that. So it's actually been looked at and reviewed if it's on private property. And there's authorization in that ordinance for the Public Works Director to actually map out the right-of-ways and say, "These are pre-approved locations where there's sufficient right-of-way width to do this kind of street vending." So this ordinance is just being clarified to say, "You don't get the right to operate in a park by getting a street vending ordinance. You have to go through these other two processes if you want to do that." And we're here because, again, the language in the park zone didn't quite match the other ordinances. I have prepared findings for the council, which, you know, we are required to do under Chapter 1788. The problem is, most of the goals simply do not apply to this, and the changes that are really proposed here don't really implicate the goals. They just have to do with internal consistency with other city ordinances. Nevertheless, I went through the process of looking at each of the goals and trying to determine if there was any, anything that could do. The only thing I can think of is, is it just simply clarifies commercial activity in the park zone. So that's all it's really doing. I don't think it's going to negatively impact development, economic development, or otherwise. I think it just provides clarity. So with that, that's what this ordinance is about, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Commissioners, questions? Gary?
Got a couple. Richard, does this effectively expand or contract the use of carts in park lands like up at Rhodes End or the one at D-Wayside, or would this expand or contract the current use of those? I mean...
Well, food carts that are permitted under Chapter 528 are not permitted in parks unless they have gone to the Parks Department and obtained an exclusive use permit, and that is, it's been reviewed, the location's been reviewed to see if it's accessible, and they've signed a standard concession agreement. Or food carts in a special event can be used if it's provided for in the special event ordinance. They're not really constrained, they're just, it's just clarified which process you go through.
Okay. The second question was, "How about on private land inside Lincoln City?"
On private land, the current ordinance specifies certain commercial zones may allow these food carts. The only thing it doesn't address, however, anything about how you do that. So there's a clarification in this ordinance where it simply, I'm sorry, it's not in this ordinance. In the street vendors ordinance, which is not before you, it simply says, "If you're going to be on private property, you need to be in a location on that private property that has had some review through the site plan process." So it doesn't restrict it, it just says, "You're going to go through some process." And the example would be, you have a certain number of required parking spaces on your private property associated with your business, and you tell a food cart operator, "Sure, you can go out there and take up this cart and this space, and you can take up this space, and you can take up this space." Well, you're probably violating your site plan approval because you don't have the required parking you're supposed to have, because you've just put food carts in there. But if you had reserved on your site plan, this area is excess parking and could be used by food carts who are licensed under 528 because it's accessible and it's not needed parking, it's in excess of the requirements, then you would have an authorized space. So that's what we're trying to do, is make sure that those ordinances work together.
I just came up with a further question. I know it's probably not our prerogative to ask about food permits, food handling permits, that kind of stuff, but is there, are we regulating food carts to that extent that their cleanliness is guaranteed or anything like that in our city code at this point?
Well, in Chapter 528, it does say that they're supposed to have all their appropriate permits and licenses, and I don't know if it says that we get a copy, but I think we can request it. Again, other agencies regulate food handling, not us, but we don't want people using our public spaces if they're not properly licensed, and so that's one of our requirements. You have to have an OTP, you have to get the appropriate food handler's permit, that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Steve?
Would this preclude a nonprofit like the Girl Scouts or a baseball team selling hot dogs or cookies or drinks at an event at Christus Park, for example, to fundraise for their team or their club?
No. The expectation is that in the existing Parks Regulations now, in Chapter 1216, the, a non-for-profit may operate an approved concession, and the City Council is actually, in that ordinance, indicated that the 10% concession fee that's normally paid by a concessionaire in a city park is deemed a donation back to that non-for-profit. But they have to verify every year that they are in fact a 501(c)(3) non-for-profit, and they do that to the director.
And they would have to apply for a permit to do.
Yeah, you can't just go set up shop in a park, and what this is really doing is saying, "A license under Chapter 528 doesn't get you the authorization to go into a city park. You've got to go through the park process to locate in a park." You can locate in approved locations that have been reviewed by Public Works and the ADA Coordinator under the street vending ordinance, but that's not a park. Parks got to go through the park process or the special event process. So certain things trigger a more involved process, which is a special event process.
Marie?
Is there a size limit on the street vendor carts you mentioned?
Yeah, they're four-by-eight, basically.
So they're not trucks? They're not food trucks?
They're not, no, they're not food trucks. I know that you are going to be talking about food trucks in the near future, but this is vending from a four-by-eight push cart. We clarify in that ordinance, which is going to the City Council, that you don't actually have to have a cart. It could just be a table you set up and then take down. It's portable.
Is it all associated with food, or can it be like hats and bandanas or...?
It can be any product or service, because there's actually some case law out there that if you restrict it to a certain way, some guy in Eugene sued and said, "I want to sell joke books," and your ordinance says you can only sell popcorn and something. And so we sued, and it was a violation of the Oregon Constitution, Article 1, Section 8, free expression, which I think was a bad case, because I don't, it's about commercial activity, it's not about expression, but that's, so we basically said, "Any product or service that's legal." Now, of course, you know, things like marijuana and things like that, no.
Okay. That was my, no, that wasn't my next question. So Gary mentioned locations like the D River and the park in Rhodes End, which is a state park. So does this apply in those locations?
They have their own jurisdiction, and you, well, you can't basically go set up in those without getting permission from them. So, yeah, we're not, this ordinance is not addressing that.
Is the cultural center considered a park?
No. The cultural center's zoning, I think, may be general commercial. They have a lease with the city, and they have uses specified in their lease, which governs what they're allowed to do, and it's got, it's consistent with the general commercial zone, and they can have special events, and they actually have an exception to certain special event requirements, because it's kind of set up as a venue for events.
So this, this change wouldn't impact their, for example, Sunday farmer's market or anything?
No.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, now is the time for public comment and testimony. Does anybody want to speak on this? No? Hmm, okay. Any comments from representatives of public agencies? Nope. All right. So if there's no further comment, is there a motion to close the public hearing and the record?
So moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. What is the pleasure of the commission?
Make a motion to recommend Ordinance 2019-13 for adoption.
I'll second that.
To the City Council.
To the City Council.
To the City Council.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, do we need a roll call vote on this, Kate? If you like, or you can do a voice vote. We can just do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The motion will be forwarded as a recommendation to the City Council, and the City Council will hold a public hearing on this matter on Monday, March 25th at 6:00 PM. Okay, where are we here? Any old business?
No.
Any new business?
Well, no.
Any Planning Commission training?
Not tonight.
No. All right. Reports and comments?
Do any commissioners have any reports or comments?
Well, we have some comments about the outgoing director. Should we put that under this heading? Let's finish with future agenda items in next meetings first.
Okay.
Our next meeting is Tuesday, March 19th, and it looks like it's going to be a work session.
Yes, we will be doing work sessions for both food carts/trucks, as well as accessory uses at places of worship at this point in time, and I'll look to Kate for confirmation, but I believe we just are having the work session. So we will be able to dive in, pull our sleeves up, and really start to think about and take into consideration some of these questions you had tonight.
Excellent. Okay. Richard? You know, retirement is that time in your life when time no longer means money, so... And of course, you know, all successful, the foundation of a good retirement is good planning, so I'm not worried about you succeeding in this next chapter in your life. We do, however, have a few questions for you before you leave us. So Steve?
Yeah, I have one. What's your most memorable experience at a Planning Commission meeting?
You know, I was just thinking that I had gone to probably about 400 Planning Commission meetings since I've been here. Most memorable experience, well, there were one very memorable one that was seven minutes long. That was, approved the minutes and adjourned. Well, there have been a couple of times when we were concerned enough about order that we called the police to come to the meetings. That was early on, when some controversies were going on. That was pretty memorable. I'm going to stick with that, I think.
What year was that?
2000.
Right after you got here. There's a connection there of some kind?
Pardon me?
Right after you got here?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Marie, do you have a question?
I'm taking note.
Richard, have you planned your wardrobe going forward in your retirement date?
I have been acquiring more aloha shirts, so...
Planned to wear them over there or here?
Here, there, wherever I am, so...
Gary, do you have a question?
Well, I was going to ask him about whether, you know, you were the reason for the ballistic padding underneath our desk, you know? Had you rubbed somebody raw, or, and what was the most controversial topic, I guess, that came to fore?
Well, there were, there were two. One is very obvious, the VRDs was very controversial, and that went on for years and years. And the other was the, what we call Goals 5 and 17 on designating significant natural resources, significant wetlands, significant riparian areas, and significant aesthetic sites. That was, that was the area where they ended up having to have police in the meetings, because there was, there was a Citizens Advisory Committee, and it was, the meetings were energetic, I'll say that, because there were very strong feelings on both sides.
Is there any chance that the heritage trees might come into that same class?
Well, you know, I don't think we're saying anything about, "You have to set this tree aside, and we'll do whatever, you know, we won't let you do anything to it." I don't think that's what's happening right now, so... But not a bad idea.
Miles, do you have a question? No? Okay. I'm going to put mine in the form of a Jeopardy question for you. So the answer is one, and it takes all day.
Was there a category?
What is preparing PowerPoints for Planning Commission meetings?
Okay, all right. Well, the correct question was, "How many retirees does it take to change a light bulb?" But I like your answer, too. So, you know, your, your list of, of projects is impressive. I'm not going to read it. It's three pages long, and it contains a remarkably wide assortment of work. And I suspect that while you were in law school, you didn't think that you would be spending two decades as a planning director, but I hope that you look back on your time here and appreciate what you've done and are proud of the accomplishments that you've had here, because they are really impressive. It's a different city, I suspect, than when you got here in 1999. And I hope you feel good about your role in helping the city evolve to what it is today. And I think I can speak for the rest of the commissioners in thanking you for your efforts here, and wishing you cheers to continued good health and good friends, old friends, and some fine adventures in your retirement.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. It's been a good run. I've enjoyed it. There's been controversy. One thing I learned is that you'll never hear the term beloved planning director, because no matter what you do, half the people in town hate you, so...
No, I think that means you're doing a good job.
Thanks.
So, any other comments, parting shots?
I'd just say, you know, I think you had one of the toughest jobs in Lincoln City, and you always handled it with wisdom, good humor, and grace, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Any further thoughts? Okay, let's adjourn the meeting and have some cake. Thank you. Thank you.